Good evening, this is the March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four University Heights City Council meeting. I want to thank everyone for being here. Mrs. Thomas, will you follow the roll? Mr. Kane?
Here.
Seth?
Here.
Tony?
Here.
Wise?
Here.
Spock?
Here.
Smiles?
Here.
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 Will everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the republic we serve, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting. Were there any comments? I know that Ms. Wise made, you know, some impressions before, and Ms. Thomas, you had a chance to review those. Is there a motion to accept the, to, um, accept the minutes from this meeting? So, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, Mrs. Thomas, will you follow the roll? Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Seth? Stop saying. Mr. Tony?
Aye.
Wise? Aye. And, Spock?
Aye.
Mr. Daniel?
Aye.
Smiles? Uh, okay, the minutes are approved. Does anybody have any additions or removals from the agenda? Okay. We'll now be taking comments from the audience. They will be restricted to five minutes per um, audience member. If everybody could please state their name and address. Is there any audience member who would like to make a statement? Yes.
Good evening, Paul. My name is Paul W. Lindner. I come to this assembly of council, mayor, citizen, University Heights. I come for one reason, we can speak on an issue of totally false lying, attack, or my name, parroted by the mayor of University Heights, accusing me of being a racist in public forum as mayor of University Heights. The only reason I can think of this, why you could signal me out for this unwarranted lie, is because I am the signature of the petition committee to recall the matter. So that's the way I've been sitting. The only way to refute this vile lying accusation is to have someone to speak that part about. And now I ask a person to come forward at the end of their statement, and I want a written and oral apology from Mayor Brennan. If not, by my way, my options to get redressed through legal action. Thank you, everyone. Good afternoon.
Dana Lindner. I've been calling you over the past century. Yesterday, I gave up my power, but I'm standing for three decades, usually, uh, on my father's side, as a fellow American Indian pitcher that I took to sell his skills. In the nineteen ninety, I did a Japanese exchange student for a year in a major school. Uh, all best friends and all partners are all, uh, completely through state. He's the only one that's uh, so I don't know where the thing from, if I'm getting right.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience want to make a statement?
Thank you, Janie. Uh, I'm L. H. thirty-nine seventeen, Paverden Road. Moving University Heights Board is a nonpartisan, citizen-led committee committed to advancing our community. This committee is comprised of five members who have signed the affidavit to recall the mayor, as well as several other mayor members of the community who have very serious concerns about the ability of our mayor to lead our community. The recall petition outlines points, one of which the most concerning to a majority of these hundreds of individuals who have already signed the recall petition. While I only have five minutes with you today, I will highlight a few of the points outlined in the affidavit. The ordering of directors to violate a power revised code seven-three-three dot oh-six under threat of suspension or dismissal for a first offense if they meet and speak with council members about budget issues. Managing city employees through fear and intimidation does not align with the values of our community. There should, there should be no place for bullies in politics. The bullying from our mayor is a microcosm of a larger issue of inappropriate behavior by politicians at the state and federal levels. Our building department continues to suffer from the loss of long-term employees who knew and understood our city's building codes and had an immense amount of institutional knowledge about the building department. Employees have left and continue to leave the city due to the mayor's actions. One such employee has threatened to file a lawsuit against the city for age discrimination. Expensive litigation costs generated by delayed in resolving civil and federal court actions taken against the city for First Amendment violations, especially in the teeth of Grant versus City of University Heights, Ohio. The lawsuit states that the city and the mayor discriminated against Daniel Grant based on his religion. Since two thousand twenty-one, the mayor waged a campaign specifically targeting Grant as well as other Orthodox Jewish residents. This campaign directly responds to a hostile segment of the mayor's constituency that seeks to prevent the growth of the city's Orthodox Jewish population by limiting the locations where Orthodox Jews can spread. We cannot tolerate this kind of behavior in our city. University Heights should be a safe place for all to practice religion without fear and intimidation. Follow, failure to follow legal rulings of the law director and associated of higher revised code requirement. A letter was sent to six hundred residents outlining an illegal process for exterior inspections. When this was brought up by city council, the law director met with the mayor and the housing director to correct the inspection process to make it legal. However, the mayor refused to allow a corrupted letter to be sent to residents who received the first letter outlining the, um, illegal procedure. The most important point on the affidavit is the unprofessional and inappropriate behavior, as well as the defamation exhibited towards city employees, guests, and members of city council and public forums. The mayor has been on record recently stating, "I'm a fairly plain-spoken individual." Most people appreciate that. I called that guy a word I can't say on TV. Mr. Mayor, why do you appear to be so proud of him? This is not the kind of leader our community wants or needs. In March of two thousand twenty-three, the mayor called Councilwoman Sacks "the dumbest council member we have." "The dumbest council member we have." This came out of the mouth of an elected official. On April fourteenth, two thousand twenty, the mayor called a resident "a jerk, an a-hole, and a psychopath in a recorded phone conversation." December of two thousand twenty, the mayor used profane language towards former Councilwoman Barbara Langfield. The mayor has been censured by council for his offensive and inappropriate language and for his conduct, unbecoming of a mayor. The mayor does not represent our community in a professional manner, and we must recall him from office. Our community has spoken to hundreds of people over the past few months. We have heard the stories of residents who have had terrible interactions with the mayor, and who do not agree with the manner in which he leads. One person asked us, "If the mayor can't manage his anger, how can he manage the city?" Our community needs to heal from the damage caused by this man. We cannot do that until he's out of office. A failure to engage in principled dissent is a dereliction of duty. We, the people, as citizens of this community, have an obligation to hold the mayor accountable for these egregious actions. All University Heights registered voters are encouraged to join us at the voting polls tomorrow, Tuesday, March nineteenth, to sign the recall. If residents are not able to sign tomorrow, we can schedule private petition signings via our email address, movinguniversityhighsforward@gmail.com. Thank you.
So, anybody else in the audience would like to comment?
I'm Tina Byer. I live in University Parkway. My community knows me as Prana, of Aritun. I am the treasurer for the Political Action Committee, Moving University Heights Forward. However, my comments tonight are mine only, and I do not claim to represent anyone else. There may very well be those in my community who disagree with part or all of what I say tonight, and that is their right. My family and I have lived in University Heights for almost six years, but have only been following city council meetings closely. Well, since I heard a rumor of the mayor being censured by city council since May of two thousand twenty-one. At the time, my family was feeling from two incidents the month before in which a John and Caroline originally student had set off M eighty fireworks on the Geary Elementary Playground behind us on two Friday nights to ease the part. M eighty fireworks sound like bombs. We were not okay. In addition, as the post-COVID lockdown were being lifted and people began returning to playgrounds, one day I was working in my attic at a backyard garden when suddenly I heard someone screaming, "Shoot! Shoot!" I looked up to see a young lady coming in by two young men on the playground. She then screamed something else, doesn't shock me, which I will not repeat. And her friend barely reacted. By June, we had put down a deposit on a vinyl fence replaced our chain link. Took almost a year for it to be installed because first the parts sat off the coast, parts sat off the coast of California for months, and then our city component was missing from the moving department, and towed from one, found it on a shelf. I was not okay. That spring, we tried resolving a neighborhood issue revolving traffic and clogging. Regrettably, we allowed ourselves to be intimidated in silence. I was not okay. In mid-August of two thousand twenty-one, a teenager who'd grown up in our community lost his life in a senseless and violent act committed at his love's gate. We didn't know the family, but we are all family. And my friends and their children were in deep pain. We were not okay. Three weeks later, the second day of Rosh Hashanah was Wednesday, September eighth, two thousand twenty-one. My friends and their children were still not okay. I saw with my own eye across the Alexander Scholl on my way to Scholl in Beachwood. The private investigator, the city's outside council, had hired me. He wasn't even trying to work undercover in a big black SUV parked on the wrong side of the street and facing the wrong direction. Considering what had happened just three weeks before, it was no wonder that our community was not okay. As the council already knows, many University Heights residents experienced real fear for their safety and the safety of their children that day. University Heights should be a safe place for all to practice religion without fear and intimidation. In theory, people of faith should not fear other people, only our fear. However, we are also human and imperfect. This is why every day we have to repeat the watchwords, watchwords of our faith. Shema Yisrael, Hashem Eloheinu, Hashem Ad Ha'Chad. The Lord is our God, the Lord is one. We all need to summon, to summon internal strength we may not know we have in order to overcome our natural and human fears of retribution and speaking truth with power. Just last week in an interview, the mayor stated that in two thousand twenty-one, I believe it was, Mrs. White shouldn't have admitted that the city had done something wrong and put us in a position where the city had to pay out. It looked to me like Vice Mayor Wise was actually standing up for her constituents. This is the definition of a public servant. She shouldn't have admitted that the city had done something wrong. I support our council. I support the remarkably diverse diversity of residents who have united behind the cause of recalling this mayor. And I support those who don't feel that they can come forward for whatever reason. This is why I'm here. Thank you.
Go ahead, other comments for the audience?
Mike, what's good? Two-five-nine, University Ball Hall. Uh, I just wanted to thank council for putting the recycling ordinance back on the agenda this week. Uh, that was something that I was very passionate about. I was looking to see council try to find ways to improve our recycling uh, towards curtside pickup. So, uh, thank you for taking into account the advice of the consultants and doing that, that ordinance to make more of a part of the vote today.
Anyone else? Great, thank you. The next, the trend of NMR reports and communications from the mayor.
Thank you. I have great news to report on University Square. We have two significant developments today that move this project forward that I may now report on publicly. That will be more discussed shortly in executive session. Over the weekend, Macy's came to final terms on the agreement that will allow the University Square redevelopment project to move forward. This agreement was filed yesterday with the court, Sunday, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. With Macy's agreement in place, this morning, the bankrupt support approved and confirmed the sale of University Square Shopping Center to K. O. Holdings. K. O. Holdings is the developer the city has been working with since two thousand nineteen to redevelop University Square. The sale was initially held up due to COVID-nineteen and due to obstacles with the other stakeholders. In December two thousand twenty-two, the city negotiated a memorandum of understanding with several stakeholders in University Square. After extensive negotiations for the framework set forth per that MOU, including those last-minute negotiations filed over the weekend, the parties have come to terms that allowed sale to proceed. Closing is to occur ninety days from today's court order. After that, we can begin the work of redevelopment, including the peel back of the garage, the conversion of the Cedar Tower into apartments, and a new family active entertainment venue in the former Tops Griffin store. And that's not all. This afternoon, I presented at the Cuyahoga County Community Development Committee meeting on the five hundred thousand dollars in county ARPA funding needed for the MOU for the University Square redevelopment project. These funds will go towards the parking garage repairs and improvements, of which target has advanced two-point-six million since the pandemic began. I am delighted to report that the committee approved the application submitted by city administration, sponsored by county councilwoman Cheryl Stevens. I can report further that the project was that procession enthusiasm that additional county council members joined the application and added their names to the project today, including county council members Sonny Simon, Yvonne Comine, Kurt Commell, Dale Miller, and county council president Brunel Jones, Jr. All of, all of this support on county council should ensure formal passage. There is an old saying that success is many parents, and tonight, we have many parents, many people, thank. I thank our team here at City Hall. I thank first our city law director, Luke McConville, whose tireless hours these last few weeks on the sunset of his time here as our law director is the capstone of nearly ten years of strong work here in our city. I thank the rest of the team administration, economic development director Susan Drucker, finance director Dennis Kennedy, communications and civic engagement director Mike Cook, executive assistant to the mayor on special projects, Deanna Graham Fisher, together with past team members, former city engineer Joe Chuni, and former community development director Patrick Robey-Moniz. I thank our outside legal counsel throughout this project, bankruptcy counsel Mike Devlin, council on the development agreement, Bryce Stiglitz, both of Bricker and Grayden. A special mention and thank you to the Cleveland Heights University Heights School Board, including current members Joey Serini, Dan Heinz, Ollie Lewis, and past members Jim Bosch and Beverly Wright for working with us on the Tiff issue. Once again, I thank county council member Cheryl Stevens. This project was frustrated by the pandemic and using ARPA funds to ameliorate the pandemic efforts that's stalled out this redevelopment project is exactly what President Joe Biden had in mind in creating ARPA and all the other infrastructure programs to move our country forward out of the COVID economy. I want to thank our city council for our members in the past for joining the endeavor to move our city forward on University Square. Though our work isn't done, we have an executive session shortly. Though it has been adversarial times, I will have to thank our other stakeholders, the representatives of Target, Penn Macy's, Joe Landon of the bondholders, Irina Palchuk, and before her, Lornick, at UMB Bank. I also have to thank our friends at the Cuyahoga County Land Bank and two county executives looking out for University Heights alums, both Chris Ronayda and Arnold Boudish Beforehand, who both took an active interest in the redevelopment project. And with them are county prosecutor Michael Malli, who together with Adam Judy looked out for the city's interests and helped ensure that the county's interests and the city's interests remain aligned. Of course, I must thank Brad Colling and Greg Levy, the developers who will create the new University Square and breathe new life into this development. I know how much you believe in the project, or you wouldn't have stuck it out as you have. I look forward to working together for years to come. As I said back in my two thousand twenty-three State and City Address, Brad and Greg, thank you for helping move University Heights forward. Most of all, I want to thank the residents for always believing in what we're doing and giving you the chance back in two thousand seventeen to lead this effort as former mayor to redevelop University Square. Of all the reasons why I ran for this office, it is the one that has been the most elusive, most difficult to achieve, and the one that may now be the sweetest. Today, we did it because of perseverance, being creative, and most of all, never, ever, ever, ever giving up. It is why I'm here. It is why you put me here, and is why I will continue to work hard moving University Heights forward. Thank you. This concludes my report.
Thank you. And I have two reports from communications from city council and taking of action thereof. Last Wednesday, I met with the mayor to discuss next steps for our facilities. We discussed touring one, touring one more new, um, facility that was built recently, which was in the city of Brooklyn, and then getting the facilities and infrastructure committee together in May to review our inquiries to be sent out in May or June. We agreed that police and fire facilities are priorities. I'm waiting for the mayor to email me some promised documents. I have already emailed him the ones that I promised him. The CIC, as the mayor, um, just informed council of the University Square, um, project developments. Um, we have not heard that before. The CIC needs to meet before the next scheduled meeting to create a second CIC to obtain, um, to transfer the garage into a separate CIC. This was discussed, um, in a public CIC meeting. This was actually suggested by former councilman Golds and was a game changer in the city's thought process, which changed the trajectory of talks between the city and the other stakeholders. It was actually stalled for quite some time. Because of this, talks moved forward. I believe that this can get done quickly, especially now that all the parties have agreed to these terms. This is a combined effort, as the mayor mentioned, between city council and administration, and I hope that that can move forward quickly and easily. That's all for my report. Does any other council members have anything you'd like to discuss? Yeah, councilperson Wiser?
Vice Mayor, um, rather sadly, would like to read something into the record. The mayor in the podcast reported that the city annex with the communications director present accused the council of a number of things that were half-truths and quite frankly lies. He apparently decided to attack me in particular, accusing me of a number of things. I wish to publicly address only one of those here tonight in the interest of time. I will save the others for a later date. The mayor claimed that Mr. Lindner and I are racist because, as he stated, we wanted a brick fence at the end of Jackson or a metal one with a bar of wire on top. The mayor claimed we did this to prevent African-American high school students from climbing the fence as a shortcut to school and back. This is laughable and really a lie that can be proven quite easily by listening to the Zoom of the meeting held on four-four, two thousand twenty-two. This meeting was a discussion of what could possibly be done for the west end of the city of University Heights with some potential ARPA funding coming from funds the county councilwoman and students control. These funds are now part of what now is University Square. Yes, we both, Paul and I, spoke at that meeting as residents of the western end of University Heights and residents of Jackson Boulevard, along with one other person. Yes, the fence was brought up and the vandalism being done by kids. However, it was not in regards to African-American high school students and not by us. We know our neighborhood is mixed race with white, Asian, and African-American children, some of high school age. Apparently, the mayor knows so little about our neighborhood that he really doesn't know who lives here and thinks that any kid talked about must be African-American. I guess that is a term of racism as well, when you assume who would be the kids spoken about vandalizing the fence, but that was not us, and it wasn't the case. Mr. Lindner talked a lot about issues with infrastructure in our area. He mentioned issues with housing. He actually didn't talk about the fence at all. Another speaker brought up the infrastructure, the fence, issues with sidewalks, and the need for a better police presence in the area. When talking about the board-on-board fence and the problem with kids and adults, I might add, who have broken boards or torn them off as well to make it easier to go through the fence, they noted, person speaking, that there is a decorative brick area at the end of the street with a metal fencing design in the middle, and the metal fencing has a pointed top. It was suggested perhaps a fence like that would keep the kids and adults from going over the fence. They also noted the issues with the kids running through the backyards of this portion of the street and cuddling through from Cedar to Jackson as well. Councilman Gould, who was president of the meeting, reacted to this, noting that there was a safety issue with this and explained some of our concerns. The idea of using a steel fence was noted as a good idea at first glance, but with narrow openings between each area by another council person. When I spoke about the fence, I first noted that the city of University Heights was paying to fix the fence, since the Coral Company, who owned the shopping center, currently was unwilling to do so, although they owned the fence. Later, after additional comments on other issues, I spoke about the fence in regards to the challenges faced, faced by our safety forces when someone who commits a crime has the ability to use backyards as an escape path or through holes in the fence to evade the police. I did note that since Coral had just sold the shopping center, the maintenance appeared to be improving. They had fixed the parking lot and hoped new owners would maintain the fence. More importantly, I talked about how the city has neglected the western end under multiple administrations. I applauded the ideas presented by council members earlier in the meeting, like receivership provision homes and upgrades for our parking area. I also spoke about the safety issues that have plagued us and have not been addressed by multiple administrations over the years, actually do impact the games that do exist in some areas that, but next to University Heights. I noted that these issues can even bleed over with the new townhomes coming in as well. I talked about the city using some of the ARPA I talked about the city using some of the ARPA funds for smart city technology that is expensive. I talked about the joint formal agreements that have existed on the boundaries with the cities we abut that probably need updating and confirmation. I even applauded Cleveland Heights for installing cameras in their portion of the Cedar Taylor interchange. I indicated my belief that we need not spend every dollar of the proposed funding on infrastructure, but hope council would use the money in a more targeted manner. I acknowledge the challenges our city has because we are so small and our ability to apply for infrastructure money at the federal level is limited and how maybe working with the county, that was accounting person, would assist us to apply for grants at that level. I talked about how I felt that Mr. Linder was right about the infrastructure. The first thing anyone really sees in University Heights is the conventional streets and how streets on the west end have not been done in years. Jackson Boulevard was last done in nineteen ninety-six. It makes people wonder if our city is viable if our streets are in terrible shape. Someone pointed out, it's just not doing the street. We also have to maintain them. Mr. Linder sort of closed the discussion by noting houses in our area are the most affordable in the city, and we should encourage people to buy here. The mayor did acknowledge that Jackson is missing curves and not been done in an extended number of years. He also later noted he had been exploring sidewalk programs of other cities, and he also claimed not to know anything about the issues with the fence. That was everything that came from the people that spoke at that meeting. So obviously, the statements about what we said were untrue, as well as this charge that we are racist. The proof is very clearly on that tape. I get it, Mayor, that you are upset and concerned about the recall the students have launched, or the residents have launched. That is their right. However, that does not give you the right to go on a podcast and lie and attack someone's character. Bluntly, it was a lie, calling me racist and making up statements that were never made at that meeting. When you do things like this, you give your residents reasons to doubt you and wonder why you believe lying and attacking someone else will somehow be the key to retaining your position. Here is what you need to realize. I am certainly not that powerful to steer what will happen to a foregone conclusion. Council is also not that powerful to affect what will happen. The only one that determines the choices made by our residents about you is you. You need to direct your attention elsewhere and not on council. I demand that you contact Mr. Doom and provide him with a statement retracting these false allegations. I also suggest that you review your words for the rest of that podcast and consider correcting the other half-truths and lies that you told as well. Your behavior on that podcast is beneath what we expect from the mayor of University Heights and also you, just as a human being. Thank you.
We now have to report some communications from directors of the different departments. Mr. Kennedy, Department of Finance.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just want to give everyone a brief update on where we stand on revenues and expenses and our fund balances as of today. We started the year with a little over six million dollars in the general fund. To that, here today, we've added four million six hundred ninety-eight thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars. We've expended three million seven hundred fifteen thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars. So our unexpended balance right now, as of today, is six million nine hundred eighty-eight thousand eleven dollars. That again, that's for the general fund. In terms of all funds, we started the year with a total fund balance, ten million seven hundred forty-five thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars. We've added to that in terms of revenue that we've received in all funds, total of five million nine hundred ninety-seven thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars. We've expended on an all-fund basis, four million six hundred twenty-one thousand nine hundred three dollars. So our unexpended balance as of today is twelve million one hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars. I took a look at our year-to-date first quarter ECO tax collections. Obviously, next month was the big month, and that's April eighteenth was the final filing date for all federal, state, and local taxes. We're down about one point three percent from the first three months of collections last year. But that's primarily due to a refund that got processed in January, of which it's not a similar item last year. So we're looking for a healthy collection in the month of April, and I will, the budget is not fully loaded since I passed that last meeting. So I'm finishing up my reports through February right now and get those out to everybody.
Mr. Kennedy, do you expect any any funds that would be able to be transferred into the investments once we get that income tax revenue?
That's something I'll take a look at the beginning of April, only because of the money that's committed for acquisitions, some other things, but it's probably, but it'll depend. I don't know those numbers when we get pretty far in April.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Director Blon.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I note that we have on our agenda this evening an ordinance to for the property that's located on Lawrenceville next to our current municipal facilities. This agreement embodies a settlement of our pending amendment of an obligation, and I am asking the council to move past this legislative emergency this evening. I will report further on University Square in his every session.
Thank you. And I just, I just want to say publicly, we had a small gathering before this council meeting. This is Mr. McHamville's last meeting. Everyone had the same sentiments. His his character, his kindness, his sensitivity, his intelligence, his just command of the law was such a was such a gift to the city, and he will be sorely missed.
Thank you for those remarks, and thank you, everyone. Thank you to the mayor and all the council. You know, several of you dropped notes off at my chair here. I want to thank you. I haven't had the chance to thank you. Thank you to all the board and commission members that had the opportunity. And most especially, thank you to the residents for forbearance and allowing me to serve as a moderator for the past nine plus years. Thank you.
Hey, public safety. I know that Chief Perko is not here today. Chief Rogers? Chief Rogers, I just have a couple of questions. If you could come to the podium. Thank you. So I know, Mayor, we had a, you know, discussion about facilities, and I was just wondering if you had a conversation with Chief Rogers about how through with, about the RFQs from the different cities, the different chiefs that he is in contact with?
We have not yet had that meeting, though.
Okay, and about speaking to him about the tour in Brooklyn also.
I've spoken to Mayor of Brooklyn, but that's still fairly preliminary. I have not had an opportunity to meet with Chief Rogers on any of these items since we last spoke.
Okay, so, you know, chief, I guess, we'll touch base, you know, the three of us in the next week about, you know, the goal is to contact the chiefs of the like cities, getting RFQs, talking to them about how they how they have their specific safety engineers and architects, how they went about their project managers, their owners' reps, if it was a certain safety owner's rep or a general owner's rep, how their process went for them. The goal is in May is to have our lay facilities and infrastructure committee with the council, the whole, together with police and fire to review those RFQs, and the mayor and I are going to to get that out at the end of the summer.
Okay, we've gotten some of that information from the past.
Looking forward. Thank you. Mayor, do you have a report from the fire chief?
There's there's no report in question.
Hey, service? Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the service director? Hey, building and housing? I'm sorry, housing.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure, Ms. Wiser.
Since it was brought up, I believe at the last building meeting, we did discuss the generation of the new letter. It may have been a lot before that corrected the original letter and that it was to be sent to four hundred residents that have received it. Where is that? We don't have another building meeting coming up for a month. I'd like to know where it's.
Yes, good evening. I'm working with Assistant, Assistant Law Director since we're on the crafting of the letter. It should be done this week.
And I'll get a copy on my phone. Thank you.
Thank you, city engineer.
So I started with looking at pavement marking projects. They're here, so being water replaced. So hopefully next council meeting, I'll have some some items here done.
You may not be aware of this, but we did a pavement marking. The linear footage was not correct. And Mr. Chuni, the last go-around that he had, verified with Chief Rogers, I believe, confirmed that marking was some outdated information. So just some lessons learned. It's like you want to speak with the chief just to make sure that those are.
What I have and see if that agrees with.
Okay, that makes it easier.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Wiser.
I have a question. I know that Mr. Chuni last year was working on bathrooms for the park. We moved on on that there. Supposedly, there was hopefully some plans.
Yeah, there have been plans have been drawn up, and we've made a press and state capital budget for funding on those plans. I don't think I've gone, I don't know to what extent Mr. Cheney went over with Ms. Mochi those plans. This is the Russian projects of longest distance in the community.
I'm just curious, that was supposed to have been moved along.
Thank you. We appreciate it. If you take a look at that. Communications and civic engagement.
Yeah, Mr. Cook is the flu, but I can report on his behalf that today we began delivering to households protective eyewear for the upcoming solar eclipse. So that's going to continue on, hanging up all the way through the event. And there will also be protective eyewear provided at the event, so on April.
Ms. Ruck, any question?
Yeah, regarding the protective eyewear, how many pieces of cloth? Two pieces are in the regard of the veil. Two pieces are in.
And Mayor, I noticed that, I know Mr. Cook isn't here today, but there's no live stream. So there's interns are not here as well?
Intern Sillian's class this evening.
Okay, so there was no backup for the live streaming?
Well, Mr. Cook is the flu, and we are at the back of his the owl. The owl is operating.
Chloe doesn't have class on Mondays because she's single on Wednesdays.
I understand that she is class this evening.
I'll check.
Okay, I mean, even so, if we can make sure people tease us, Mr. Cook, since there are a number of interns, if we can make sure that's all. I appreciate that.
Sure, sure.
And then I know Ms. Drucker is not here to be here to report for Ms. Drucker.
I do not. She'll be back next week.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are now going to go to the agenda. We first have a resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh nine recognizing the accomplishments by Luke McHamel on his departure as law director for the city of University Heights, Ohio. I want to thank, I don't know if Mr. Cicero is still here or not. Can't see if he is. He left. I want to thank him for for taking the lead on this resolution. I will, I will read it aloud. Whereas serving under two mirrors, Luke McHamel has dedicated almost ten years of his professional life to making University Heights a better place to live as its law director. Whereas the law director provides legal advice and counsel with respect to numerous aspects of administrative and legislative functions of municipal government. Most of the law director's duties are things critical for the well-being and efficient functioning of the city, but are hidden from view. Whereas Luke has used his legal skills and talents to find unique solutions to legal issues that the city faced and has provided sage and sound legal advice. Luke always found a way to get things done thoroughly and timely and always had the best outcomes for the city in mind. Whereas Luke's contributions as an intelligent, thoughtful, hardworking, kind, detailed-oriented, dedicated, and generous person are unparalleled and will be greatly missed. Whereas Luke is a longtime University Heights resident and has actively participated in community activities over the years. Whereas University Heights Council acknowledges the contributions Luke has made to all of us during his tenure as law director and wishes him the best on all of his future personal and professional endeavors. University Heights will miss him and his talents. Thank you. I'll sign this. Okay, is there a motion? Saying we're going to make any comments?
I'm seeing Mr. McHamel smile twice. Once was two days ago, now it's. Basically, he's unflappable, so and powerful information and guidance he's provided over the years. Been premium the last two years, especially with executive session. He's been, the opinions are unbiased and informed, and thank you for those.
Hey, Mrs. Sanders with another role.
Hi.
Side, Mr. Lee.
Hi.
Squares, hey, Mr. Ra.
Hi. Thanks, everyone.
There is now a motion for executive settlement to discuss real estate matters regarding University Square. Um I will make the motion. Is there a second? Mrs. Thomas, we call.
Hi.
Hi. We're now going to go to executive seven. Um Mr. McHannville, do you think it will be a long executive session?
Uh I believe the developers here, are they all in the hall there?
Yeah.
I think it's probably fifteen minutes.
There are a number of items on the agenda, so it's up to the audience if they want to say.
Well, I mean, I, um, hold on. It's.
I mean, we. You know, this. He's trying to take this gift. You know, who are a lot of. You ready to do this? Do you think it'll go all along? I see much more than.
A bunch of them. Where's the key? The gate one?
All right. All right.
Kelly, I'll take one as well.
Your motion to, or to go ahead and say for the session. Second. Second by Mrs. Marshall, Mrs. Sanz will call the roll.
Hi.
You said, hi.
Hi.
Why, I'm trying. Mr. Rob, hi, Mr. Rob, hi, this was. We are now in regular session. Agenda letter C, motion to accept nominations for the position of law director. A few weeks ago, we did have a council of all meeting where we interviewed three out of six potential candidates for law director. Every excellent candidates. It was very competitive. Does anybody want to make a nomination for the appointment of a new law director? I will go ahead and do that. I will nominate Brad, Brad, Brian for the law director position. Mr. Brian interviewed. He had an excellent interview. He had a knowledge, breadth of knowledge that encompassed many years, many facets of the law that our city needs. Encompassing many unique pieces of legislation that our small city actually, it would be useful for. Anything from zoning, which we're going through right now, to some unique kinds of things. I'm just trying to think off the top of my head, but it was, it was really an encompassing type of, of knowledge base that the other candidates, I thought, did not have. Does anyone else want to make any comments about Mr. Brian?
Yeah. And, you know, you could know what you are.
And Ms. Lazer.
I think he brings some, some skills in moving difficult things forward to collaboration. Depending on the situation, I hope something you probably all need.
Thank you. So I'm. Believe I just, I made a motion to nominate Mr. Brian. Is there a second? Is there any, is there any discussion? Mrs. Thomas will call the roll. Mr. King.
Hi.
Said, hi.
Hi.
Wise, hi. Mr. Rob.
Hi.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Mayor. I may, I would suggest before you leave the outside, um, if we would have everyone fill in the blanks in the next seven quarters, ready for an accurate mandate. Check. So that when we need it, there's no. There's a blank in the title and the first word is clause and then in section one, in the case you would insert the name rather than.
Okay, so you'd like me to actually read just those two pieces? Or would you like me to?
No, just read by title only, right? Include his name, since you nominated him. Include his name in the title. Or you can, or you can read the ordinance and then vote to amend it. But we're not nominating.
You're saying read ordinance, new law director, new law director. Grant, right, that's, okay. Okay. We are now at letter D on the agenda. So ordinance twenty twenty four dash ten, appointing new law director, Brad, and Brian, effective April first, two thousand twenty twenty four, and clearing an emergency. I will make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty four dash ten. Is there a second? Time of emergency, is there a second? No second. Are there any comments? Hey, Mrs. Thomas, we link all the rules, suspension of rules. Mr. King.
Hi.
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 Hi. And I made ordinance motion. Mr. King.
Hi.
Said, hi.
Hi.
Wise, hi.
Hi. Hi.
Okay. Congratulations again, thank you. I know that there'll be some collaboration with Mr. McHannville to get up to speed. And. Letter E, ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh five, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement into an engagement letter with Nicola, Good Branson, and Cooper LLC for ongoing legal services upon emergency. Mr. McHannville, would you like to?
So as I indicated last night, I would choose myself. Especially at the site.
Sure, so just to refresh everybody's memory, there are a couple of items that city council and the mayor would like Mr. McHannville to continue ongoing services. Can I specify what they are, Mr. McHannville?
Yes, yes. Okay.
Okay, so it's within our packet. And then it's from speed. Okay, so there are a few items on there. Number one is representation relating to University Square, including negotiation of any other transaction documents, review of bankruptcy proceedings, and related consultations. Alexander Schull litigation, including any proceedings in connection with Alexander Schull in the City of University Heights. City of University Heights versus Yachty. And just to elaborate, we hope that the Schull litigation and the Yachty litigation are concluded. There are a few workers' litigation that are ongoing that Mr. McHannville has been involved with that he would like to complete. Is that correct, Mr. McHannville? I believe that newly referred matters would go to the current, the new law director. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I have to choose myself.
Okay.
I think that's a discussion, you and the new law director.
Okay, so any current workers' litigation would continue with Mr. McHannville. There are a few nuisance abatement cases that are wrapping up as well. And there is a few foreclosure defense cases that are, that are proceeding. I would suggest that any new. I'm sorry, does that?
I'm sorry to be.
Yeah.
That's right. This is.
Hold on for one second, just because it's not, it might not be recording. The one thing I would just comment on is any new matters would go to our new new law director. I don't know if there's any comments from the city council.
I would think when, when this particular letter was made up, there was no way to know what it began from. Something new would show up that the current law director might start with and then would complete. So newly referred matters, those would be matters that are already being worked on, that occurred after the date of this letter. Because we couldn't do anything with it until we.
Have the new law director.
Yeah. We have a new law director. And it is now. So I think that maybe is the easiest way to.
Recordize this letter. That makes sense. Yeah, so up until April first.
Yeah.
Because this was made on February.
Right.
Does everyone agree with that statement? Okay. So I will make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh five. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wise, are there any comments? Hey, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it's on emergency. And we call the roll for suspension of rules. Mr. King.
Hi.
Said, hi. Mr. Rooney.
Hi.
Wise, hi. Mr. Rob.
Hi.
Ms. Marshall, hi. Ms. Wise.
Oh.
In on the main motion. Mr. King.
Hi.
Said, hi. Mr. Rooney.
Hi.
Well, hi. Mr. Rob.
Hi.
Ms. Marshall, hi. Ms. Wise.
Oh.
Need the motion passes. Agenda item F, ordinance twenty twenty four dash eleven, authorizing the mayor to enter into real estate purchase agreement with Inchead Adaphine Israel for the purchase of real property at twenty three oh eight Warrensville Center Road for the purchase price of one million fifty thousand dollars and declaring an emergency. Mr. McHannville, would you like to discuss this?
Thank you, thanks, Mayor. This purchase agreement has been negotiated since the time that we reached agreement with council of Dally. We reflect the negotiated purchase price of one million fifty thousand dollars. It provides the city with the opportunity to do some due diligence prior to acquisition of the property. Specifically, we anticipate that there may be a survey that we have performed, just so that we can be clear on the boundaries of the property as we head into our planning process for facilities. But the transaction is scheduled proposed no later than sixty days from entering into the agreement. This is the estimate that anticipate that everyone will be fully executed.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. McHannville? Is there a motion?
So move.
Emergency.
Emergency.
On emergency.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll for suspension of the rules. Mr. King.
Hi.
Said, hi. Mr. Rooney.
Hi.
Wise, hi. Mr. Rob.
Hi.
Ms. Marshall, hi. Ms. Wise.
Oh.
In on the main motion.
Hi.
Said, hi. Mr. Rooney.
Hi.
Ms. Wise, hi. Mr. Rob.
Hi.
Ms. Marshall, hi. Ms. Wise.
Oh.
Okay. Seems we have a site. And the letter G, ordinance twenty twenty four dash twelve, permitting qualified ordinance section ten sixty four point zero two one, entitled Loose Recycling Services and Clearing an Emergency, on emergency. Mrs. Sacks, would you like to discuss this?
Thank you very much. First of all, what is the ordinance number? Well, okay, thank you. So on Wednesday, March sixth, the Service and Utilities Committee met together with Mr. Allen Hennington, the service director who represented administration, and the law director, Mr. McHannville, the attorney. There was a robust, engaging discussion regarding how to apply and how to work with the SCS engineering recommendations in a practical manner for the purpose of increasing clean, non-contaminated recycling by reducing barriers for those who voluntarily want to participate in recycling. That meeting's discussion has resulted in tonight's amendment of the, uh, loose recycling ordinance that was twenty twenty three oh five and is now twenty twenty four dash twelve. So to summarize. Residents will be given the opportunity to opt in or subscribe to loose recycling collected at the curb. And I'm going to use those terms interchangeably, opt-in and subscription. Um. So when opting in, the city will issue subscribers to power. At choice of. One or two sizes of recycling carts, we talked about forty eight gallon or ninety five gallon. Uh, at no cost. Recycling education as to what is and is not approved by the city's, uh, MRF, the Materials Recycling Facility at that time, at any time, they have updated education. And an opportunity to request an accommodation for collection other than at the curb, such as at the backyard or side door. So one point that was discussed, but is not in the ordinance, pertains to a citywide parking restriction. To allow recycling truck to access cars, wheel to the curb, but it might be instructed by parked cars. There are two main reasons. One is why it is not included, and we're not, uh, going to pursue at this time. This only pertains to a relatively small number of residents opting into a cycle whose curbs may be blocked. Parking violations are criminal offenses and not easily enforced. So instead of a citywide parking den, when subscribers bring their cars to the curb, which may become inaccessible to the recycling truck, these cars. At that point, the truck driver could accommodate the truck by getting out of the truck and pulling the car where it could be lifted. Before replacing it back on the curb. They don't take it to the back of the house, they just put it back on the curb. So once again, I would very much like to thank the committee, Mr. Pennington, Mr. McHannville for participating in formulating the ordinance that is before council today. And I ask for your support so that unified first against to move forward finally and improve recycling against this. Other items that we, um, continue to discuss, we started to discuss at this last meeting for the capital budget, operations budget, materials recycling facility, and service department over time, uh, pertaining to the service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, did anyone have any comments? On this one, yeah, Mr. Good.
Um, let's say thank you to Mrs. Sacks for looking for a way to improve recycling, it's also important to residents. I'm glad that discussion led to, uh, what initially started as, uh, backyards, uh, recycled collection. Uh, evolved to curbside automated, uh, collection. Although this could be too, uh, potentially, uh, consideration. Uh, fully automated curbside collection for no recycling, but, uh, right other, uh, targets. Thank you.
Yeah, Mrs. Sacks.
And I would just like to say that this is predicated on two surveys for the residents who not wish to have curbside automated collection for the curb. So they were solid base, so we're just talking about the same right now. And I thank you.
Mr. King.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, I'm pleasantly surprised that, uh, city's moving toward automated curbside, side porch pickup. I have some reservations about bi-weekly side porch pickup and the opt-in nature of program, but, but I think this is a great start. I'm thrilled to vote for the ordinance this evening, want to thank Sacks for her work on this and, and everyone else in the community.
And Mr. Rob.
I want to thank. Sacks for her hard work dedication to this project. Long time. Also, I thank Mr. Pennington for, uh, sustaining our household in, uh, trying to. To a very quick pilot study to see how the size of the cans are and. They can go to the curb, et cetera. Um, but I'm most appreciative of the committee and, um. Compromising on this issue, first and foremost, uh, this is a proprietary program. Um, if you. Want to recycle, you can recycle in a loose, uh, manner. If you don't want to recycle, you're not forced to recycle. If you want in the backyard still, there could be accommodations for the backyard. Um, if you are excited about curbside, there's your option. So, um, this is really planned to, um, please. The majority of our households who spoke in those two surveys. Um, furthermore, I'm appreciative that, um, the committee understood my concern with the can size. Particularly with the, uh, size of the garages, um, and so the, uh. Compromise to have two different sizes is much appreciated. Mentioned the forty eight and ninety five. Um, I think that's a good start as there are households in the community. White line that are two people or one person that do not produce same level of materials as a household would say more or more. Um, so if not all one size fits all arrangement. Um, we've had a very robust conversation in the committee meeting regarding, uh, parking. I'm appreciative that, uh, we're not going to have any parking ban, um, that, uh, our service department will continue to provide a top-tier service. And if that means, you know, a couple of cans are concealed behind a car, I would hope that they, uh, sanitation worker would. Grab that can so that the recycled material could be disposed of. So, uh, I think this took a lot of hard work, a lot of discussion. Um, I was nervous more than once and I'm totally comfortable with the outcome of this and always will, uh, improve our recycling. Um. A backlog.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. And I'm too excited about this, about this outcome. It shows how. Council can work with the director and, you know, Mrs. Sacks sat with Mr. Pennington for hours and. It, it really, it showed when we came to the meeting how, how the head of a committee and, and the director can really, you know, do that lead work and come prepared. And how council can come in thinking one thing and come out with a different. With a different outcome because they collaborated together, right? Um, and it, it was a really, it was a really great process and thank you, Mrs. Sacks. Um, would you like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to pass, uh, our ordinance twenty twenty four dash twelve. Uh, and federal loose recycling services and declaring an emergency.
One second.
Mrs. Thomas, we call the role. Mr. King.
So we'll suspend, shall we?
Yeah. Other roles.
Ah.
Mrs. Sack, hi.
Mr. King. Hi.
Wyman. Hi.
Mr. Rob. Hi.
Mr. Rob. Ms. Marshall. Hi. This is Wyman. Oh. And on the main motion. Mr. King.
Ah.
Mrs. Sack, hi. Mr. King.
Hi.
Wyman. Hi. Mr. Rob.
Hi.
Hey, thank you. Hey, agenda item H, motion authorizing the change order to the twenty twenty three dash twenty four tree pruning and removal contract, an amount not to exceed five thousand one eighty five, bringing total contract cost of fifty four thousand eight fifty. Mr. Pennington.
Mr. Pennington, Vice Mayor. Work in the city of twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, tree pruning and removal contract, clearing completion. Order to complete the necessary work, change where it's necessary to work the counter during the course of the project. Uh. Basically, there are, uh, eights located where we need to do some different work. And the cost of that work of. Total five thousand, they're gonna be five thousand. Change order will increase the, uh, contract whole park free service to five thousand, fifty four thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars with no tax. Funds are available in the, uh, cheap remaining funds and, uh, at this point, I would, the council. Prove the, uh.
Does anyone have any questions? Yeah, Mr. Rob.
Um, thank you. On the supplement page to your letter here, you have, uh, itemized. A through I. And then add-on. So could you explain to me this? I don't understand the abbreviation, but S, we argue the C and the R, C.
Yes, Councilman, uh, S is a stump removal. So we have, uh, two stump removals of the, uh, eight locations. Uh, R is the active removal. But we have three of those. Uh, C is a, uh, thing that we're using is, uh. Just doing trimming and cleaning of, uh, head branches, that sort of thing. Then R C is a, a raging thing, it's clearing out the lower branches out from, uh. Sidewalks and the sphere. Uh, in addition to, uh, cleaning, uh, in, um, the tree, one of those. Actually, move it that way. So that, that summarizes, uh, the work needed to be done.
Okay, and then you say three, three removals, but is this? That's what the, um, the Hickory is even one, two, three, are those the number or is it three Hickorys?
Oh, no, there, there's, uh, a total of three trees there. They're each located at the.
Oh, I see, that's the same address. Okay.
Three.
Okay, so everything was done in accordance with the, um. Estimate, the whole of the thing they thought to do verified all, uh, everything in front. And so this is really just an additional eight tree removals or stump removal.
Yes. And if you, that's. And if you, the burger over the tree that came down, uh, in a storm event. Uh, that were taken, we need to stop out as they're.
Were these on the original list?
No, they were not.
And how were these, the story?
As of the, uh, R was looking at the periodic locations, we had a few, uh, turns raised by residents. Uh, we reevaluated some of the locations and, and made some, uh.
So these are generated by residents after we have the plan?
Yes, they were, as they're out in the areas, uh, some of these were, were ones that came up that, uh. Uh, returned to residents, uh, at a couple of locations, the Bay Harbor and the others, typically where. Uh. We saw three trees that, uh. Really needed to come down. And at this point, we wanted to.
I'm not arguing that they don't have to come down, I'm just. If the arborist actually went through and made this recommendation. It, it just surprises me that now we're having five thousand dollars. That's all.
Any other comments? Hey, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any comments or, or discussion? Hey, Mrs. Thomas, we call the role.
Mr. King.
Ah.
Mrs. Sack, hi. Mr. King.
Hi.
Wyman.
Hi.
Mr. Rob.
Hi.
Ms. Marshall. Hi. This is Wyman.
Oh.
Motion passes. In letter A, motion authorizing the mayor to accept twenty twenty four Community Recycling Awareness Grant Award from CCSWD. An amount of six thousand dollars for the design, production, and mailing of two postcards to University Heights households regarding recycling program. And, um, Ms. Brenner Fisher, you're going to be speaking on this?
Yes. Good, good evening. Um, yes, so this is a twenty twenty four Community Recycling Awareness Grant Award from the town of town solid base district. An amount of six thousand dollars, which is the maximum amount. We propose, um, designing and using and mailing two postcards to every household regarding recycling, most in spring.
I have a question, oh, sorry, this is next, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I understand that we are working with consortium again, or that's the mayor's recommendation. And that it would be going out to different MRFs, so we don't really know. What recycling, uh, we know what we have right now with Temple, we don't know if Temple's going to be awarded it again. And so different MRFs accept different types of recycling. I'm worried that if you send out a postcard now and then another one in three or four months in the fall or whatever, six months, and it's different, it's going to confuse people. So I'm wondering if there's a way to wait until we know and then maybe have this as part of the education with the opting in. And then we know exactly who we're sending it to also, not just to everyone. So that's, um. I wonder if you thought about that. I mean, I don't have a genie about the ordinance before that.
So the grant application to the beginning of the year. And so what we proposed at the first postcard that we, regarding cardboard recycling, and specifically because we know, uh, from experience, we've got the Braha location, Udon's yard. Uh, that we need to remind people that we have platform cardboard, we, we have the back of the entire, um. Uh, and other materials from the cardboard. Um, so our plan was to send out a feedbacking string about that. And in the fall, I left it big because we were hoping that there would be a new direction, uh, and we certainly knew that there would be a new MRF. Uh, and so, uh, so, uh, of the fall.
So I think that's, I think. That sounds very, um, practical. Um, because we didn't have no way to, to do cardboard, um, and people could lose education about that besides. For instance, if you're planning on hopefully a forty eight size, um, having that in long quantity at a lot of programs, we don't have a lot, but when we do. Uh, we certainly will need to know how, you know, me, meaning me as a divvy day with my neighbors. Um, how to, that's most acceptable if it exceeds what that curb can hold. Um. Okay, is, uh, I, I wonder if, um, somebody here on that service utilities committee who can see the postcard, um, that's reasonable or if not, um. For sure in the fall. We'd like to see it. Understand it, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Wyman.
We don't have to do the cardboard on that postcard duty.
One in the grant application, that is what we proposed and that is one.
Can you speak louder, louder please?
Proved, that was what was in our application that we opened earlier. Um, so, um, I don't know, I mean, perhaps there's an opportunity we go after them. Um, but that would be a second of them.
I would think that considering we're now talking about offering. Uh, a new service. That you, you did that instead of talking about flattening cardboard, it'd be good if we're mailing to every house. To announce the program. That is going to launch. That actually will cover all recyclables. Instead of wasting one postcard and then the city has to again. Do a overall announcement to every household, hey, we've got a new boat. May as well, I don't know, I don't know, you think this is fact.
So the interesting thing about cardboard that's different about the subscription and opting in is anyone who do cardboard and, and drop it off or bind it up and, you know, you pick up at the curb, which, okay. So, um, perhaps binding. You know, because you, you can send that to everyone and cardboard, when you go to everyone, it applies to every household. You don't have to opt in for that, it's just information. But it would be great to somehow announce the program once the service department and administration, uh, gets those exact rules together. And then the second postcard perhaps would be more targeted. To reinforce. So, you know, for those who subscribe.
And it is my understanding that they offer this program of the year. Wow, that's amazing. But sure enough, we're, we're on, on June.
Yes.
And they need a period. Yeah, so they, I believe that they offer this program of the year, so I want to continue to be, you know, fine with it. You don't want to call.
Yeah, and you don't want to, your name is what you call it, we don't have trouble with it.
And I think it actually, it's a great idea to, to do the cardboard because everyone can drop off and currently we can still recycle in the backyard. But maybe we can put like a little disclaimer, look forward or watch out for our new program that's, you know, launching September or October. You know, whatever date that Mr. Pennington decides for our loose recycling program, if you put like a one liner in there. But I think that's a great idea to put the cardboard on there because even if someone chooses to opt out or however, I mean, this is Sacks, you know, we decide we're going to say what it's called, we always have the, the city drop off. So thank you. Yeah.
Yes, if I may, I, I, you know, I think this. Solid Waste District will take great interest in the ordinance that we passed, see. So I, I think there's going to be room to work with them on, on, uh. Changing up the message of them. I mean, there, there was a grant, you know, we wrote the best grant we could at the time. Uh, we didn't know necessarily that it would be where we are at this moment. Uh, we didn't, we didn't just say. Uh. Optimistically that by all, we would be sending out an education piece on a new system. But I, I don't think, I guess we, Solid Waste District, I, I think. But I, I don't think, I can't speak for Solid Waste District, but I, I think they would be I tend to think they will look favorably on the idea that the first piece that goes out, even if it's primarily by cardboard, also to use up, I have, you know, there are going to be some changes. You'll be able to opt into these changes, look for this to come later this year. And, and we can refine that message with Mr. Pennington, with Solid Waste District. We can take care of that. We can see that. I think that's unlikely possible.
Yeah, Mrs. Sacks.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pennington, did you know about this grant?
Yes, good.
Okay, good. So I, I would appreciate maybe in the future, since we were talking about recycling for years now, and we were this close to the ordinance, and actually we had an ordinance, February twenty first of twenty twenty three, to ask to be put on the agenda so we could, the right-hand, the special left-hand council can kind of know what's going on and coordinate our efforts. I hope going forward, we'll do that a little more planfully. That would be good for the residents.
Yeah, Mr. King.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And thank you for working on this, on this, on this issue. I, I think having communication on how to recycle this is a good first start. I was looking through the toolkit of, of marketing items that the Solid Waste District offers us. Thank you, I get. And I noticed that one of the items that they had was a sticker. And those, we go sticker to design to go on the lid of a recycling cart. I know a number of people in other communities who have these, and it outlines all of the different items that you can recycle. I know that's outside the scope, but we've discussed with Solid Waste District so far, but something like that, I think would be good to look at as we roll out the carts. Because it was right there when you're going to put the items into your cart, see, see whether it should go in there or not. So something to consider as we, as we continue with the program and also with other, um, just the, and something. Thank you for the work on this.
Yeah, anything else? Is there a motion authorizing mayor to accept the recycling grant? Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Cooney. Mrs. Thomas, please call the rule.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Sacks.
Hi.
Ms. Cooney.
Aye.
Ms. Wise.
Aye.
Ms. Ruff.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Oh.
Hey, the motion passes. Is there a need for an executive session? Okay. All right, reports from standing committees, building and housing, Ms. Weiser.
We'll move back to meeting for the second council meeting in April. But there'll be a rule, a rule, just making sure everyone knows.
Okay. Um, committee outreach, Mr. King.
I'll need to send out a doodle for
Great. Ethnic development, Ms. Ruff.
No report.
Uh, finance, we will be having our quarterly meeting probably in May because April is Okay, recreation, Mr. Cooney, I know you have a doodle.
Doodles out, just waiting for one more council member to respond. That's over to my So today, thank you. It's coming up in the in the in the
Okay, safety, Ms. Marshall.
No report.
Okay, service and utilities, Mrs. Sacks.
No report.
Thank you. And committee of the whole, we will be scheduling a facilities and infrastructure committee meeting in May, and we are having a hard time solidifying a retreat date that we can get everybody together in. So we will be sending out another date.
So the ninth is not for you.
Ninth is not for retreat right now. That is it? There are any reports of special committees are taking of the action, of the action thereof? Any unfinished miscellaneous business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Mrs. Thomas, please call the rule.
Aye.
Ms. Sacks.
Aye.
Ms. Cooney.
Aye.
Ms. Wise.
Aye.
Ms. Ruff.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Wise.
Oh.
Thank you, your turn. Thank you.
I'm sure. Since they sign up we want to give you what we're so you love them. That's better than they lost you to me, you still will. So I said you, uh, you have the sandbags. That's my that's what I think. You're in and that's
That's one thing.
I don't know why I thank you very for I'm I'm glad I was speaking. Thanks, I think, when I couldn't there's nothing well, for the part of